Okay, Mr. Marshall.
Uh, we are live. We are recording. You are the co-host of this meeting. Uh, you have nearly a full house of board members. Amherst Media is here with us. I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Welcome.
All right, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of May 1st, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and is the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town or Amherst's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colden.
I'm here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
We do not have Jesse May Major with us at the moment, and we don't expect him later either. I, Doug Marshall, am present. Janet McGowan.
Here.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Karen Winter.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined a Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, first item tonight are minutes. The time is 6:36 and we have the minutes from March 6th. And Chris, am I not correct that you also sent us the minutes for March 20th?
I did send you the minutes for March 20th. I think I sent them yesterday, so you may not have had time to review them.
Okay, well, why don't we go through the March 6 minutes first? Uh, board members, uh, does anybody have any edits to those minutes? Uh, Bruce.
I'm not sure whether it's an edit or not, but uh, in the site visit report portion, uh, I'm not sure what page it's on, but uh, I could quickly find out. However, there's uh, six items and the number six items, I, I delivered the report and the number six item attributes me to saying that uh, there was a preference for four-story buildings over five-story buildings. And I certainly don't remember saying that, but uh, maybe someone else did. Or maybe, uh, but, but I just don't remember that being a discussion of the site visit, but am I wrong about that? Doug, Chris has got her hand up.
Oh, Chris, go ahead.
I think Janet said that. Ms. McGowan said that.
Okay.
I think I remember Ms. McGowan saying that she doesn't support five-story buildings, but prefers four-story buildings.
Okay, it doesn't seem like a site visit. Uh, it doesn't seem like something that should be said or recorded on a site visit. But is that, am I wrong about that? I mean, that's kind of uh, not just data collection. It's opinionating.
Should that be stricken?
Any objections to striking that, anyone?
Janet particularly, I guess.
I hear no objections.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember saying that, but I could have said it, but I didn't, you know. But.
Yeah, we, I mean, we usually try to stick to observations inside visits.
Yes, I don't, I don't recall.
With that, with that correction, I move acceptance of the minutes as presented.
All right, does anybody want to second at this point?
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Karen, sorry to miss you on that. Okay, uh, any further comments or discussion? All right, um, we'll go through the roll call. All in favor, anybody in favor of adopting the minutes with that one edit? Should vote yes. Bruce?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Johanna?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Six votes in favor, one absence. All right, um, do members feel that you have looked at the March 20th minutes adequately for us to discuss, discuss them tonight? Um, I'm seeing a couple of heads nod. Janet, your hand?
You know, I read them and they're very short, so maybe if no one's, if someone has missed it, they can probably take a minute and go through them.
Okay. Well, I saw Karen and Bruce in favor of discussing them tonight. Um, Fred and Johanna. Johanna's nodding yes and a thumbs up. Looks like Fred is the same way, so okay, great. So, um, any comments on the, on the gin, on the March 20th minutes? No comments. Okay, well, in that case, I will move that we adopt the, the March 20th minutes as drafted by our uh, highly capable staff. Uh, would anybody like to second that?
I second, I second.
Thank you, Karen. All right, uh, any further conversation about those minutes? No, okay, we'll go, we'll start with the end of the alphabet, uh, last names. Karen.
Yes.
Johanna?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
And Bruce?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, so those minutes are adopted as drafted. All right, thank you all. All right, um. All right, so the time now is 6:41 and we will go on to the next item, which is a public comment. I generally read the names of the public attendees that I can see at this point in the meeting. So I will read, uh, the following names. We have Chris Chamberlain from Berkshire Design, Elizabeth Armstrong, Greta Wilcox, Jane Wald, Jenny Calick, Fred, uh, Ken Rosenthal, uh, someone named Lauf, I believe, uh, Mark Andrews, Maura Keane, Melissa Ferris, Michael Lipinski, Pat Brinkman, Priscilla White, uh, Roger, and Tim Widman. All right, so are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on a topic that is not a specific item on tonight's agenda? I am not seeing any hands raised from the public. Okay, uh, I do think I'm gonna conclude. There is no public comment tonight. So we'll move on to the third item on the agenda. Time now is 6:43. And we'll go to the public hearing. Uh, a site plan review. So this is regarding S. Site Plan Review 2024-06 at the Emily Dickinson Museum at 20, 2014 Main Street. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. The applicant is requesting site plan review approval under Section 3.334 of the zoning bylaw to construct a two-story building approximately 1,630 square feet, including wood siding and metal roof, including incidental utility work at 81 Lessie Street and other site improvements. Parcel is located at map 14B parcel 24 and 24 and 26 in the RG zoning district. First of all, are there any, is there any board member disclosure? All right, so I will offer that, uh, I am the son-in-law of one of the members or, uh, people associated with the museum who have given money to, uh, build this building. So I have filed a form with the, with the town clerk, uh, regarding the potential appearance of a conflict of interest. Uh, I don't believe I have a, a conflict. The, the relatives who are associated with the museum have made their contribution and, uh, that's a done deal. It, uh, so they won't have a financial interest in the outcome of this hearing. So, uh, does anybody else have a uh, any disclosure? Okay, well, in that case, um, I see Chris Chamberlain has been brought over. Chris, are there other members of your team that you want to bring over onto the panel right now?
Uh, yes, uh, Tim Widman is with EDM, the architect. Uh, I heard his name in that list.
Yep, Tim Widman. Um, Pam, if you can bring Tim over.
Find him, find him. There he is.
He's the one with his hand up.
I see it now. I didn't go far enough up. He should be on his way over.
Okay.
Chris, is there anyone else?
Um, I'll have to check with Tim. There's one other potential person from the architect's office.
Okay.
Hi, Tim.
Hi. Yeah, Monica is not gonna be joining tonight, so it's just me.
All right.
Um, yeah, and I, I don't think, um, she intends to say anything unless a very specific question comes up, but, uh, Jane Wald, the director of the museum, is on the call.
I had invited her over and she declined to come in as a panelist at this time, so.
I think Tim and I can, can cover things pretty well, so that's fine.
All right, I guess, uh, welcome, Chris and Tim, and it's now time for your presentation.
Great. So, um, as, as was just mentioned, I'm Chris Chamberlain. I'm a civil engineer with Berkshire Design Group in North Hampton. Uh, Tim Widman, who is with EDM, uh, the architecture firm that's working on this project, uh, is here as well to talk a little bit about the building. The property that we're talking about, which I'm sure the board is, is very familiar with the location, but is the Emily Dickinson Museum here on Main Street, um, between Lessie and Triangle Street. Um, and as we look at an aerial photo, um, this is the building known as the Homestead, um, Emily's home on the property. Uh, this building, which, uh, was owned by her brother and his family, um, is, uh, known as the Evergreens and these are the two main structures um, on the property. And, uh, this sort of existing gravel driveway leads to the location of the project that I'll be showing on the plans, uh, located roughly here. Um, strictly speaking, on the Evergreens parcel, while the museum treats this property as a single property, there are two separate parcels here. And a small portion of the work I'll note is on, um, Amherst College land associated with the Marsh Hall Building, which is located right here. Um, and as most of you are probably familiar, um, the, both the Emily Dickinson Museum and Amherst College, um, are under the umbrella of the trustees of Amherst College. So all of this work is sort of under the same ownership, um, umbrella there. And switching over to the site plan, um, this is ultimately a relatively simple project, so we'll just briefly review, um, some of the components. Um, and then I think we'll, I imagine we'll recap, uh, a nice site visit that we had with board members yesterday, uh, yesterday, um, and then be happy to answer any of your questions. So this is a, a bit of a zoom in of the Evergreens parcel. You'll see that Evergreens building poke, uh, peeking out from the edge of the sheet right about here. This is the existing conditions plan, um, with the, the homestead building far off the page to the right. Um, this line here, I'll note, is the property boundary, as I described, between the museum property, um, as, and the Amherst College land. And what you'll notice here, that's sort of a, a significant item, is, uh, these, uh, shapes here, which are noted as flat stones. And those are remnants of, um, the foundation of a former carriage house that stood on this property that was the carriage house for the Evergreens building. You can in fact see, um, a stone walk that leads directly toward where that carriage house, uh, once stood. Um, and there's been some historic research, uh, that, that can, Tim can touch on a little bit if anybody's interested to sort of establish through, uh, historic records, insurance maps, contemporary photos and that sort of thing to try to establish where this building, um, would have sat, uh, back in that time. And before flipping to the proposed project and just showing that building, I want to highlight a couple of other things that are relevant. Uh, there is an existing gravel walking path, which, uh, was constructed, uh, not too long ago that connects with an accessible route, the two main buildings on the property, the homestead off to the right and the Evergreens. And as we saw in the aerial photo, this is that, uh, dirt driveway, uh, that leads up from Main Street on the Evergreen side of the property. Um, and, um, and as you'll also note, this is a, a little bit relevant in terms of other reviews that we're going through. Um, there has been identified, uh, bordering vegetated wetland, um, in this portion here. Um, the site is, has historically had a battle with water that seeps out of the hillside from the north to the south. Um, there's been extensive work, uh, before, uh, it was a museum and merely a residence in fighting water, trying to get its way into the Evergreens. And so this seems to be a ditch that was dug to try to intercept some of that water and redirect it. And now it is a wetland resource area. And so the project that we're describing is within the buffer of that wetland and we're currently working through the Conservation Commission process. Um, additionally, um, there is a, a significant tree on the site, this 24-inch pin oak. Um, unfortunately, this oak is, uh, and it's a little more obvious as members saw on site, is actually growing out of what we believe was the footprint of the original carriage house. Um, and as part of sort of the historic preservation reconstruction standards that museums held to, sighting of this building is gonna put it nearly directly on top of this tree. Um, so unfortunately, this is a tree that will be removed to serve the project, um, although we are proposing, um, additional tree plantings to offset that impact. And so now looking at the proposed project, um, Tim will talk about the exterior of the building in just a little bit, um, but there's, uh, there was, uh, research to determine sort of the, the size and scale and construction and appearance of this building, um, which, uh, is being, uh, hued to in accordance with, um, some regulations that come down from the federal government as well as a number of state, uh, regulations and restrictions on this property to try to, um, recreate the appearance of the carriage house as it originally stood. Um, but the purpose of this building is actually to serve as a welcome point initially, uh, after its construction for the museum. So this will, will be sort of the welcome center for arrivals. Uh, it's gonna include bathroom facilities, which are somewhat lacking on the property now. Um, and then ultimately, this building is, uh, thought to, um, serve as an educational space in the long term. Um, among the, the major site items that are associated with this building, probably the most prominent on the site plan is an extension of this dirt driveway, which is gonna lead up to, um, the sort of reconstructed, uh, front doors to that, um, carriage house in this location. Um, this serves two purposes. I mean, one, it's, it's sort of historically appropriate for this driveway, which, uh, would have run straight into the original carriage house to be continued up into the site. But also this location is somewhat distant from the existing ADA parking spaces that are available on site. Um, those spaces, uh, which are behind the homestead building off to our right are more than 200 feet from this building. And, um, by modern codes, that's too far away, um, to cons, to be considered as serving this building. And so this driveway will be widened slightly from what may have originally been there, um, 100 years ago, uh, to create, uh, an, an ADA compliant parking drop-off space in this location here, which we will separate from sort of the rest of the sites, uh, with a couple of boulders. And this will allow for accessible access into the site, um, parking and or drop-off, uh, in this location with, um, drivers able to then turn around and exit the site. And then you'll notice that that path sort of slims down more toward the 12-foot wide, uh, maybe even slimmer than that, um, or, original driveway that would have approached this building. And that gravel walkway that I, um, highlighted before, which I'm tracing right now with my cursor, um, in order to give a little bit of breathing room from this building and ensure that we have proper drainage around it on this wet site is being, um, realigned ever so slightly. Um, and what's proposed here is sort of a slight difference of material. Um, the driveway will be more of a, a typical gravel that you'd have on, on any kind of gravel driveway. Um, and then the lighter shading that you see here is all proposed to be a stone dust surface, which is what the existing gravel path is, and that's sort of the, the only not truly hard surface, um, that's adequate for an accessible route. Um, and so this is sort of all integrated as the accessible walking surfaces as distinct from the, uh, driving surface that comes into the site. Um, the, uh, utilities for this building will be served, um, water and electric will both be pulled out of the Evergreens building along a route running right here. Uh, there is some HVAC equipment for climate control located in this case. Um, that's all, uh, relatively simple utilities. Drainage, uh, for this building, um, is being collected in, uh, gutters with a couple of downspouts in this location. We are routing that to a proposed dry well that will be under the ground, not really visible from the surface. Uh, this is proposed to provide at least some level of infiltration, at least during those parts of the year when the site dries out, to allow that water to have a first chance to infiltrate back into the ground. Um, but certainly during some times of the year, uh, there'll be limited ability to do that. And this structure overflows to existing drain lines that run into the site. Part of that water management story is about 15 years ago, the museum went through a project that, uh, incorporated a lot of drainage around the Evergreens building to dry out the foundation from the exterior. And, um, below that gravel walking path, there's actually a, a continuous underdrain, a perforated pipe that collects groundwater. And all of that, uh, today is tied together and exits the site toward Main Street where it ties into the, um, municipal storm system. Uh, that's something we reviewed with DPW early on, um, and they, they were satisfied with that connection. And the last utility, which is really the most challenging on the site, is for sanitary sewer for this building. Um, as it turns out to many people's surprise, Main Street fronting this property does not have a sanitary sewer. Um, so there is no way to connect by gravity directly from this building out to the street. The Evergreens has a sewer service with it, which has been unused for about 20 years. Uh, the Amherst College tried to explore that pipe, found that it was likely failed, but at least blocked somewhere under town-owned land off to the east, but not within the right-of-way. Um, and in addition to that, would require trenching around the Evergreens, really right along the edge of this wetland system here, um, as well as trenching on-site, which triggers the possibility of archaeological reviews. So for all of those challenges, uh, what we looked at instead is a direction where, uh, this, uh, water would be collected in a small pump station behind the building and pumped up the hill and tie into the Marsh Hall, uh, building, which you saw highlighted on the aerial photo. Um, uh, we've had that sanitary service explored. It's in great shape. Um, and we are, uh, we have a route planned for that sewer to, uh, run up the hill and then flow by gravity into the municipal system. Um, uh, as I mentioned, this project's going through CONSCOM. Uh, we've been in review on that for a little while now. Um, we have been working through a number of mitigation measures, uh, which are not, not terribly relevant to site plan review. Members are interested and happy to talk about it. Um, we are hopeful that we'll be drawing to a close next week, um, on the CONSCOM review, um, which I think was also, uh, mentioned by Chris in her, uh, reports, um, to the, um, to the board. So those are sort of the highlights of the, um, site plan. I know there's, uh, some comments and questions that came up at the, um, site walk and some from, uh, staff review, but I, I'll stop there and just give Tim, uh, the opportunity to talk a little bit, um, just about the appearance of the building and the exterior and, and the architectural thought that's gone into this project.
Okay. Um, as Chris noted, uh, we did do some rather extensive research, both ourselves and the museum, um, in terms of what was present on-site as well as in terms of where the existing carriage house was and what it might have appeared to be, um, both in terms of records in Massachusetts State's libraries, um, at various local colleges and at the Library of Congress. Um, there were documents, uh, related to its location, um, but very little related to its, uh, general appearance. Um, I can show you some of the, um, various documents that we have. We have gone through, uh, review with historical. Um, and they are satisfied with the direction we're going. We are following, um, their standards in terms of development. Um, and then have used, um, with our research from the Library of Congress, um, various carriage houses from Western, uh, and Central Mass, um, from similar time period, um, to look at them from the standpoint of their shape, their size, and the general appearance that they have. As Chris noted, the carriage house is going adjacent to the Evergreens. And so part of the effort in the design is, has really been to take our cues from the existing building in terms of its materials. So we are going with a standing seam metal roof with the intent of that metal roof matching the color of the Evergreens. And then using a vertical siding, um, which will be painted to match Evergreens, um, for the exterior. Um, that vertical siding, the intent is that that will be, um, using Boral, which is a fly ash composite product um, that is workable like wood, um, but is highly durable and will not have the same susceptibility to absorption of water and rot um, that a wood product would. Um, you're seeing now some of the exterior elevations, um, that we've developed for the building. Your main approach to the building, um, will be this one from the south, um, where you'll have a set of wider doors, six-foot uh, opening with about, a pair of barn doors, um, to give it that feeling of, um, a carriage house. Our detailing in terms of the trim, as you can see in our documents, um, we are taking from the rear portion of the Evergreens building, um, the front is highly ornate, but the, towards the rear of the building, the trim is a bit more, uh, restrained, um, and simplified. And so we're using that as part of our, uh, reference in terms of building the language of how this building is detailed. Um, in terms of the interior of the building, uh, just to note, which it was a discussion point yesterday on site during the, uh, site walk, um, the first floor will have, uh, two bathrooms, one of which will be fully accessible. Um, and as Chris had noted, the first floor will be primarily, uh, community space, um, as a visitor's, visitor's center to start. And then for educational purposes as time goes on, um, and then the. And then the second floor is currently planned for office space.
And I would just note that that Tim mentioned, the project's been reviewed locally by the historic commissions. It's also been reviewed at the state level by the Massachusetts Historic Commission, which holds a deed restriction over the property and has been designed to be in compliance with the standards set by the Department of the Interior at the federal level for historic preservation projects. And in this case, in particular, a reconstruction project. And so with that, I think we'd defer to the to the board as to questions, comments, discussion.
All right, Chris, I see your hand. You are muted.
I wanted to clarify that this project went to the local historic district commission. And did it also go to the historical commission? Yes, it went to both of them.
Ending is yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Tim, just one point that also came up yesterday is the the passive house standard.
Yeah, so the building is being designed to be passive house, which essentially means that all of the envelope, the R values, the insulation values rather, that have been used and selected for windows, doors, and the insulation throughout the building are much higher standard, which is going to allow for our heating and cooling systems for the building to be that much smaller and efficient. Because the loads will be far smaller.
Okay. So why don't we go to the report from the site visit? So Karen and Bruce and I were at the site visit yesterday and Janet too. Sorry, Janet. And would any of you like to make the report? Okay, well, I guess I'll I'll start and you guys can fill in my my memory. You know, we all we all gathered with Chris and Tim and 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 Chris Brestrip too yesterday about 5:15. And we looked around at the site. Chris went Chris went through a lot of the stuff he just talked about and pointed out the stones on the ground, the walkway coming out of the Evergreens. Talked about the pretty steep slope for the drive coming up from Main Street. The the accessible parking area that they've planned. Talked about the the dry well for the for the runoff from the building. And he pointed out the the berm that's just downhill from the new ditch or the not new, but the ditch that was created to divert water away from the Evergreens. We did wonder about the project that came to the planning board a couple of years ago, where there was new lighting planned between the Evergreen Evergreens and the Homestead. And I'm hoping Chris has found out about that in the last 24 hours. That's what's coming to mind for me. Karen, Janet, Bruce, anything else?
I think I think it's really wonderful that this carriage house is going in because it will provide restrooms and this place is going to become a lot busier. It's it's been renovated in such a beautiful way. And this is a historical building, so so I like that idea. I like the fact that it can be used for education. It is very sad that that beautiful tree has to come down. But that's a sacrifice. I mean, they will be planting others. There are still plenty of beautiful trees on the property. Yeah, I I think it will will certainly not distract from what is there and and be a great addition.
All right. Thanks for those observations. Bruce?
Doug, we also spent a moment more impositively on the drainage system, the drainage from the roof to the dry well and the dry well to the under drains, which then are existing, which then feed into the the streets. And we understand that the town engineer has not specifically reported on that. And 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 we understood that his prior principal concerns were that the conservation commission's interests be respected. He has apparently reported on the sewer, but not the drain. And and so we spent a moment just trying to imagine whether it seemed just for our non-engineering backgrounds to be satisfactory. And it was observed that the basically the what's changing is the the rain is hitting a roof, which is going to make it run off much faster. But the amount of water that's ended up flowing into those dry well and then overflow into the under drains into the town sewer, that's town drainage line, at least on Main Street is 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 would seem to be acceptably indifferent from the current situation. So we did we did take the time to explore that in a little more detail.
Okay, Janet.
Thanks for taking the lead on this, Doug. We did we did talk about like how accessibility issues and how you get to the Evergreens. And so the driveway that will be expanded is a steep slope from the from Main Street. And so that, you know, no one could, you know, with mobility issues really could easily get up that. And then so the idea is that people could drive up. Somebody could, you know, if they have a wheelchair, mobility issues, they can get out. There's no parking in that area by the Evergreens. And then the the car would or the vehicle would have to back up a ways. I'm not quite sure how far in order to make like a turn and turn around. And some concerns were raised about the safety of that if people were using that driveway to walk up. And then we asked, because none of us who had worked on the original permit a few years ago could remember if it was accessible, if the slope coming up the walkway from Main Street to the Emily Dickinson house was like meeting accessibility standards. It's a more gradual slope. So that was a question that that I think I raised and Chris raised because we couldn't remember. I think that's it. Oh, and we discussed a bit the lighting. And there's no, there's not going to be any lighting. There's going to be two lights on the carriage house that are gooseneck kind of traditional lights that will only be on when the building is in use and not after that.
Thank you, Janet. Chris, do you want to comment on a couple of the topics that were brought up here?
I certainly can. Joanna has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you. I appreciate.
So this, where are we done with the site visit conversation? The report on the site visit? Okay. So now we're going into questions from the board. Go ahead, Johanna.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for the presentation. My question has to do a little bit with the master plan for the site and whether there is one. So I remember a couple of years ago doing the site visit and discussing the upgrades for the museum and approving the walkways that are in place now. I think I vaguely remember the discussion of the carriage house at that point, but I'm wondering if there are you know, in the coming years, additional projects that the museum is intending to pursue in order to bring it back to its historic glory.
Okay, Chris. So there were two or three things brought up in the site visit and then Johanna's question.
Great. And fortunately, I can address all of those at this point. So first, the lighting. So astute observation on the on the spur of the moment yesterday. The project that established that gravel walking path did propose lighting. I talked with Jane Wald earlier today. And so the lighting that was proposed for that path has not been installed yet. There've been a series of issues with that, the first of which was difficulty working with the contractor as the pandemic set in, as that project was underway. And then the Evergreens building was renovated for their HVAC system, which created disruption to the ability to pursue the the completion of that lighting project. And then with the imminence of the carriage house project, the museum felt that it was more appropriate to wait until that plan was fully developed and approved and then sort of take a step back and confirm that the goals of the lighting plan would jive with those changes now that they're a little bit more real. And so the museum is still intending to complete that work. But but sort of wants to take a second look to make sure that it's exactly what they want. And should there be any changes, of course, that would have to come before the board to verify it. So I I guess if there's concern about that lighting not existing and now the museum moving on to a new permit, perhaps that's something that could be addressed in in a condition of this permit. The museum's still interested in completing that, but but have had a series of events that will lead them to not do that just yet. The accessibility question. So the museum as a whole has had an ongoing process over many years of trying to improve accessibility on the site. As is obvious, when you look at it, this site was never developed with the intention of it being accessible, that word didn't even mean what it means today when it came to be. And so fighting that elevation change from the street into the site and into the buildings has has been a long term challenge. The driveway up to the Homestead building doesn't does not meet full ADA or Architectural Access Board accessibility, which would require it to be less than 5%. It is somewhere around seven or eight percent coming in. What I would say is to to borrow a term that Bruce has used is at this point, it provides functional or practical accessibility to a certain extent, if not full compliance. What the museum has done is established the existing accessible parking spaces directly behind the Homestead. They have developed the accessible route through the site, which connects the Homestead with the Evergreens. And it also connects to a property adjacent to the site over on Triangle Street, 20 Triangle, which itself also has an accessible parking space at it, which is available. And there's signage there directing an accessible path toward the museum. And of course, this project is going to establish an additional accessible point where people can come onto the site, which connects to that system. And the museum has on hand conceptual designs for improving accessibility to the public way of the sidewalk on Main Street. That is a goal of the museum to establish that that connection. It has to be done very carefully in order to weave itself in with the various historical restrictions and standards that are held to this site. They had previously explored both for the purpose of accessibility and to improve access for the fire department, actually flattening the Homestead driveway. But the grades are such that they would actually need to lower the entire parking lot, which then creates accessibility issues into the building in addition to being quite a lot of work. So that is is probably not a route that could be achieved. And I would also note that with the sort of activation of the driveway at the Evergreens, it does create a potential opportunity for pedestrian path that's oriented more toward downtown that could gradually enter the site and make that make that grade up in an elegant and accessible way as one possibility in the future. So and and then I would say, in addition to that, many of the projects the museum's pursued have gone before the Architectural Access Board, working with a historic property. There are often conflicts between historic preservation and modern codes. And they've successfully worked through the process with the Architectural Access Board to provide the best accessibility that they can at this time. And then, sorry, I can't answer any question without six answers. In addition to that, the museum website also has a page on accessibility. So anyone planning a visit to the site is made aware of the accommodations that do exist and the limitations of the site. And I think I would just summarize that by by saying that I think it shows a pretty good track record of a commitment to continually improving the site with a goal of full accessibility, but not a goal that that can be achieved overnight, unfortunately. And sort of that touches a little bit on Johanna's question is there is long term planning for the grounds and the site. The next project that is likely to come along, that would be, you know, sort of visible from the exterior, is to establish a historic garden that was present on the site, which is a little bit east of where the carriage house is now. There are two large tulip poplar trees that that the research suggests marked an entryway to that garden. And there's actually an old water spigot in that area, which presumably is a little bit more contemporary than the original garden. But that's that's likely to be a project that they pursue in the relatively near future.
Chris, I I think I want to correct one thing. I think you mistakenly said the sewer line from the Evergreens that has failed is actually heading west from the Evergreens.
Yes.
Not east.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So I had, I don't see any other hands at the moment, so I'll ask just a couple of quick questions. First of all, for the back for the sewage sewer line that's being pumped up the hill to Marsh Hall, I assume there's a backflow preventer on that of some sort that if that that we wouldn't have sewage running downhill and into the building because of the gravity.
That's correct. The the exit point of the pump in a system like this always includes a check valve to prevent the water from running back into the pump station. On short runs, sometimes that's not included and you actually do let the water drain back so that the pipe is not full, because that is a little bit of a freeze risk. But on a long run like this, we we just bury it deep enough that that's not an issue and then and then provide that.
All right. And then the last two questions, maybe for Tim. Several of the photos you showed of examples of this of this type of building showed the, you know, sort of the barn doors were underneath the ridge of the roof. And since it seems like you don't have actual knowledge of which way the ridge ran on the original building, how did you decide which how you've done it? Because clearly, you know, if you get a heavy rain, the way you've got it now, the gutters can overflow and you can get dripping on people coming out of the building.
So I'll answer with two things. So first of all, yes, you're right, the ones that I showed, because I was quickly skimming through. Historically, a lot of them do place them underneath the gable. There are others where they are actually on the side and actually using this more historical architectural rendering. This is one of the major influences that caused us to move in this direction is looking at this as a more traditional root cellar slash carriage house sort of approach, as well as orientation of the building towards the south, so that we can get more south facing on the building, which is both better from the standpoint of this the sun and the visibility as well as future or if there's any availability for any sort of other passive systems to be instituted for the building.
Okay.
And Tim, actually, just to hold that point, if you would stop sharing for a moment, there's a there's another image that I can share. I was not part of this research, but I I did have it. So I don't know exactly what this where the this originates from. But as you can see, this is an image of the neighborhood with the Evergreens right here. And this is a depiction of the carriage house as it stood at one point in time.
Great. All right. So then the last thing I was going to ask was about the window mullion patterns that you are using. They look to be a little more dense than the Evergreens. You know, you have six over six or and the Evergreens was more like four over four.
So the Evergreens is actually So the Evergreens is actually varied. It has a variety of four over four. There's also six over six. We have used more the six over six, which are what is present at the rear of the building, which we're taking as our sort of touch point of reference in terms of how we're tying to the Evergreens, which the rear portion is where we're adjacent, where that ramp comes in from the side.
Okay, great, thank you. Bruce?
Um, there's on the site plan, there's maybe you can bring it up, but I dropped mine here. There's something I didn't notice yesterday, and it simply says on the western side. There's you know, I I just can't help noticing that this looks like a one legged guy playing football, but I haven't noticed that until like about half an hour ago.
All I'm going to be able to see.
But on the western side, it's you've got step TBD, and you've been so precise about everything else, and it's a step as a so what does that mean? Is it, you mean, you don't know whether you're going to have a step there or it's a grading issue? Or you haven't decided what the material is that it's going to be made out of?
So I, well, so there would be a door pad there, I believe. I'll defer to Tim on that. I think the answer is we submitted these plans in February and we weren't sure whether there would be a step off that pad or not at that time.
Yeah.
And it is also something that may shift, because there's still, I think, some uncertainty as to what will happen with the with the stone path that I highlighted on the on the site plan.
Yeah. Because I was I was thinking that maybe what you would be doing was be using the stones that you will be picking up from around the footprint of the new building and consolidating it as a porch, as a porch patio in front of that door. But I was just curious. The, I, I think that's enough. I mean, I don't guess I really need to know, but it seems that it's a visual piece here and everything else you've been so precise about.
Tim, I don't know if you have, I assume you know, because we're we're closing in on construction documents, as to what the final treatment we decided there. At least in terms of materials.
In terms of material, I actually don't, I would assume it's going to follow suit with, like you've said, trying to use a material that is present there that is not an accessible entry or exit, doesn't need to be, that is intended as the entry exit for employees, staff entrance. So to your point, we do have to finalize that piece, Chris.
All right, I see Jane Wald has her hand up, so I suspect she'd like to comment on some.
Yes, I have I have one more question, Doug, but after Jane.
Okay. Jane?
Yes, this is this is only a comment on what we know about the appearance of the building. There is a historic photograph from perhaps the eighteen seventies or eighteen eighties that does show the if you zoom in on it, it does show the orientation of a carriage house with the gable ends on the east and the west. And if you'd like to see that, I'd be glad to show it, but I just want you to know that there is that that bit of evidence.
Great. Thank you.
I I think we might have actually seen that at the local Historic District Commission hearing, because I seem to remember images. But the second question is the 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 fire, the fire department have given us a report, but it's it reads more like a, not so much a review of the of the of the applicant's design in terms of compliance with the needs of the department, but simply a list of everything that should be done. And so I I my question is, I guess to to you, Chris. Chris Chamberlain, I realize now there's two Chris's here. That do we I didn't go through this and try and satisfy myself that all of the things that the fire department says is needed, which is a standard list of this is what we want. How much of that, and I imagine quite a lot of that, and maybe all of it is already provided, is is that the case? That this is essentially a list of stuff that's already been done?
Yeah, it 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 was almost just just a list of what's in the code, which we are actually following up with the fire department to clarify a couple of those points. The museum has coordinated the fire department a number of times to ensure that access is provided the best it can. In fact, they have notes in their response plan, I believe Jane said, as to the type of vehicle that can navigate the Homestead driveway, which is relatively narrow and a little steeper than than is ideal for apparatus. So yes, I I believe that, you know, most, probably not all, because of the nature of the site, but most of those items are accounted for. And, you know, a number of them are construction logistics plans that need to be finalized as part of, you know, the the contractor getting on site. But we are in the process of trying to tie up loose ends on that and ensure that they're satisfied with their ability to access this part of the site in emergency.
And and could I ask Chris Brestrop, whether it's, Chris, is it reasonable for us as a board to expect that the the department would review this with with regard to what's there and and make comments about where they have troubles as opposed to just giving us this laundry list?
I think that the fire department will review the construction plans, but those have not been submitted yet. So when the building permit is being applied for, the fire department has an opportunity to review the site plans and the building plan and work with the building commissioner and his inspectors to make sure that everything is provided for.
But at the moment, this list is not very helpful for the planning board.
It really is an indication that the fire department has looked at the plans. And if they had a problem with what is being shown, they would remark on it in that report. And so the fact that they're just listing what needs to be done, I don't think is really a problem. It's really, it's confirming to us that they've looked at the plans and they haven't seen anything amiss.
And I I would just add, you know, on on many projects for the college, the museum itself, the, we're working on Jones Library, we worked on the Valley CDC project on Northampton Road. We, you know, the fire department has been very good about coordinating over difficult sites that may not be able to meet the strict letter of of the NFPA fire code. And so we're we're very confident that we'll be able to finalize that to their satisfaction as the process moves forward.
Thank you.
But Chris, is it likely that or is it reasonable for us to expect that there will be no significant changes to the site plan?
I
Through through the fire department review. I mean, what's the point in us looking at this if it's going to change a lot because of the fire department?
Yeah, I we are not anticipating significant changes to the site plan. Again, based on that history of working on some of these sites.
Okay. You all set, Bruce? Okay, Janet?
So Bruce raised the issue that I was concerned about, because I went through the transmittal. And it does look like a laundry list of like, this is what you have to do. You know, and one of my questions was like, how long is the driveway? Because you need to turn around. If it's, you know, certain length and things like that. So I'm not very comfortable with the idea that, well, silence is assent and everything's okay. So I would I would be more comfortable voting yes if I knew that the the fire department had looked at this, they know these regs and they don't see a problem. They don't need to turn around or they can back out. I'm just not comfortable with, you know, thinking that if no one, if we haven't heard them say anything, then everything's okay, because that has actually not always served the town well in the past. And so I wonder if we could ask Chris Bascom to look at these plans. He knows this code inside and out and just say, there's there's sufficient turnaround. And, you know, I I don't really want to need to know exactly where the command center is in case there's a fire. I mean, I think that's sort of later down the road, but just is this, is this, is this sufficient to get a truck in and get a truck out or the equipment you need to get on site? So I'd like to know that. The other question I had was, like, this is going to potentially be kind of gathering space for educational programs. I know I've gone to the Emily Dickinson Readathon, which is actually quite crowded in a in a fantastic way. And I I, you know, one of the questions I raised at the site visit was, is there a parking management plan? I know these are two historic houses. People are in and out. They can't actually accept that many people, so I don't really think we need a traffic study. But I do think that it's very possible, or, you know, if if the museum has large events on the grounds, there really isn't sufficient parking in the area if it was like a really crowded event. And I would love the museum to have very crowded events. I think it's like such an incredible gem. And I would like to see in a parking management plan, where could overflow parking go? If you filled up the neighborhood and you filled up the the parking spaces in front, and I had suggested that the Amherst College parking lot by the alumni house would just be very easy. You know, if you're having a very big event, then you can just direct people to park there. So that that's my my concern. And actually, my hope is that the, you know, the museum gets busier and busier.
And so, in fact, the museum already does that. They, it is a case by case basis and at the discretion of the college, depending on events that are going on. But they do coordinate with the college request and typically receive permission to direct people to alumni lot for those largest events. As you know, for day to day purposes, despite the fact that there's no parking on site, the hours when the museum is busiest are sort of different than the hours when street parking is the busiest. And that's generally not been an issue. And we did submit some documentation today, sort of in support of the the request to waive the the parking requirement, which is something like a hundred and seven spaces on the property, which we obviously can't provide. Just noting that the museum has a lot of communication out there on its website, available to people who call in and 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 through those sorts of means, directing people, you know, notifying people to the fact that there is not parking directly on site, directing them to park on the street or in municipal lots. The closest municipal lots are within a quarter mile of the site. And and so they 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 do make an effort to make sure that people are keenly aware of how they need to arrive and access the site.
All right, Chris?
Chris Me?
Chris Brestrop.
I wonder if Chris Chamberlain would take it upon himself to call or meet with Chris Bascom of the Fire Department and get him to answer Janet's questions. But just a short transmittal to reassure the planning board that the fire department has adequate access to this site, and I think that's what Janet is looking for.
Yep, and and so just to to be more direct, the college facilities department, which is assisting this project, is helping us to make that contact, because they they have good communication with the fire department, as you might imagine.
So they have, I understand there's a person here in the audience who is connected with the college, Mark Andrews. Is he part of the college facilities department?
He is, yes.
So he's overheard this conversation and he can work with you to get the appropriate reassurances about that, right?
Yes, and and that is, that process is underway. I believe that they started looking into that yesterday or the day before.
So Mark has his hand up. Why don't we allow him to speak? Mark, you should be able to say, make a comment.
Thank you. Yes, I I we usually work through Rick Mirz. He's our kind of historic contact with Amherst Fire Department. And I I did just send him an email a few days ago, so that's still in progress. I sent him a text message because Rick likes to work crazy hours, but I haven't heard that yet.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Uh, Chris, your hand is, Chris Brestrop, your hand is still up.
I just stuck my hand up. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the planning board could count on getting a little note or something in writing from Chris Bascom or Rick. What's Rick's last name?
It's Rick, it's Rick Mirz. It would come through me anyway, and I can certainly forward it to you, Chris.
That would be great. Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Nate, your hand is up.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, the only thing I see on the transmittal is that they want, you know, it's a lot of it is about an access road and everything. So I, to me, looking at these plans, everything's efficient. It may be that the beginning of the access road or the driveway is a little narrow, and so in other instances, the fire allows reinforced shoulders if they need to put stabilizers down. And so where the drop off is, it's sixteen feet wide all the way back to the turnaround, that's wide enough. And so it might just be the beginning of the driveway needs to have reinforced shoulders, which Amherst College has done before, below grades, you don't see it, and you can allow grass to grow. So, you know, reading through the points that Chris Bascom outlined, I don't see any other issues, really. I mean, you know, there's water supply and everything else to me is just stuff that has to be you know, complied with, but the only my, the only thing I could see, thing that I could see changing is just, you know, reinforced shoulders along the driveway. Everything else would be kind of, you know, copastatic and just, you know, complied with as part of the project.
All right. So Nate and Chris Brestrop, you know, I think in addition to Mark Andrews working through Rick Mirz, you know, it might be useful for you to relay through your town communications that the planning board found the fire department comments to be somewhat unhelpful. And just for their future reference, and so we don't have to wonder what they really mean by that. Chris Brestrop, your hand is still up. Are you, are you, is that a legacy? Okay, thank you. Bruce Coldem?
One small further question. I think this was because I read through the suggested whatever, it has to do with bike racks. Here we have essentially a reception, a visitor center, which is formalizing the place for people to come who are visiting. And I don't know whether there are bike racks elsewhere on the property. I don't know whether, it doesn't seem as though it's the kind of institution that would require a lot of bike racks, but it certainly seems like we should have some, because some people are going to come here on bikes, I would think. And and it would seem that the point of entry should be a place where people can safely leave there and securely leave their their bicycles. So I don't see anything here. We didn't talk about it in the, on the site visit. Is there any plan to do that? Is there any reason why one wouldn't want to do it in the vicinity of this building?
So I'll start with currently, there is minimal bike traffic. But when they do arrive, people are directed to leave their bikes near the Homestead, adjacent to those accessible parking spaces in that portion of the site. And certainly the, and so currently there is not a rack. The museum is open to providing one. They would prefer that to be a surface placed rack that can be removed for snow plowing. We discussed the possibilities of putting a rack near this building, and that could get tricky. We certainly wouldn't want it in front or prominent in front of this building for the historic preservation reasons. But if it's off of the sort of walking path, we typically like to specify racks off of a hard surface. And that leads us to you know, additional impacts that conservation has to deal with, that that's not the end of the world. But, you know, wasn't really an intention to create a lot of hardscape around this building. So, and I say this as someone who gets around town on bikes, I I think that, well, maybe not ideal if that rack is placed a little bit distant from this new welcome point. I think our proposal would be to place that over by the Homestead in that existing sort of established parking area in order to more formalize that.
All right, would you be open to that as a condition?
Absolutely. Yeah, and as long as that's clear that that it would not be mounted into the ground, there's just not a great way to do that, but we'd get a substantial. But we'd get a substantial rack that can't walk away, that, that could be moved out of the way for snow plowing purposes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the board at this point? If not, I will go ahead and move to public comment. All right, so we, we have seventeen attendees still. And I guess the, at this point, do any of you from the public want to make comment on this project? Okay, it's, I'm not seeing any hands for this, for comment on this project. All right, so Chris Brestrop, I believe you had recommended that we hold off on approving this project until the Conservation Commission has acted. Is that true?
I did recommend that, and now you can also say that you're going to be hearing potentially from the Fire Department. So those would be two reasons to hold off on approving this project. I did send some findings, some draft findings late in the day. So if you're inclined to do so, you could review the draft findings and then, you know, go over them again the next time you meet on this, or you could just put those aside for now and have a chance to look at them, you know, by yourselves, and then come back to the meeting next time and, and talk about it. But they are out there in your inboxes if you're interested in doing that.
Chris, assuming we continue the meeting now, what date would you propose? And how full is the agenda that evening?
I would propose the date of May fifteenth. And right now we have Amherst Historical Preservation Plan discussion. I think Nate would present that to you, and then you would have a discussion about it. We have University Drive Housing Overlay District, and we have a proposal that Nate has put together with your help. So he would want to present that and have a discussion. And then Janet recommended during one of the recent meetings that there be a discussion about housing issues. So we could put that on May fifteenth, or we could put it on some other night. So anyway, May fifteenth is a possibility to have this project come back. The next possibility would be either May twenty ninth, which would be a third meeting in May, or June fifth.
Okay. Chris Chamberlain, what kind of timeline are you on?
The museum is anxious to get the project underway as soon as possible. So I think our preference would be for the fifteenth. And I don't know if, if reviewing the findings now, you know, just saves some time next, next month while you've got a light agenda tonight. You know, that, that seems like a possibility.
Okay. So board members, are, are you okay continuing and going along, and continuing the discussion tonight and, and going through the findings that Chris has drafted? Janet?
I haven't seen the findings, but I, I think that if we, I would suggest just waiting till the next meeting. I think it's going to be pretty short, and I think we'll have a quick vote. There might be changes to the project due to the Conservation Commission. And so, you know, I think, I think basically, if we could do it, we probably could wrap it up pretty quickly in two weeks. But if we spend time going through conditions that no one's looked at on a project that might get modified, and it doesn't seem super efficient to me. But if we got the conditions early and we all looked at them and, you know, maybe wrote to Chris on, you know, any suggestions for change, I think we could move pretty quickly at the next meeting.
All right, thanks Janet. Uh, anybody else have a comment? Anybody else want to proceed tonight? Bruce?
I was thinking we could proceed tonight, but I do understand Janet's observation. It's, Janet, it's not, it's not the conditions. We don't even have those yet. It's the, the findings that Chris has put together. So we, we would be reviewing findings. I have looked at them, and they don't seem too contentious. Because this project is what we might call a pretty wholesome project. So I agree, it probably won't take us too long next time, and maybe we should wait. I'm in two minds, I'd go either way.
Okay, well, it always seems to take a long time to read them all. So even if they're not controversial, it's a fairly lengthy process. Chris Brestrop?
So I wanted to make note of the fact that among the findings, I had some questions, and I think I've sent the findings to Chris Chamberlain for his review. If not, I'll make sure to do that, but he can follow up on some of those questions that I asked in the findings. And, and perhaps it would be best to wait until next time, because things will be more resolved by then.
Okay. All right. So we will wait. So at this point, I guess we need to put together a motion to continue this hearing to May fifteenth. What time would you propose?
I think six thirty-five would be fine if both Pam and Nate agree with that assessment.
Yes.
Pam agrees. Nate?
I agree.
You're okay?
Yeah, I agree. And I was also going to suggest that if the conditions and findings are available for two weeks, maybe we don't need to read them all of them at the next hearing, right? So the ZBA doesn't, they'll approve them in categories or just approve them and not read them every line in the hearing. And I actually think that knowing that, as Bruce said, this is a wholesome project, and the conditions will be there, you know, everyone can see them for two weeks with comments. I think that could expedite the review on the fifteenth.
Okay.
And I'll just chime in as someone who does this in a lot of different towns. That's actually the majority of, of boards operate that way.
Well, thanks, Chris. Chris Brestrop, at what point do you think you'll have draft conditions? Will those come in advance of the meeting?
I think I could definitely have them done by early next week.
Okay, that would be good, too. That way we've got everything and we can send you any comments in advance.
Okay.
Bruce, Bruce Colton?
Doug, harking back to your description of the motion that needed to be moved, I would say so moved.
So you are moving that we continue the hearing to May fifteenth at six thirty-five PM?
Second.
All right, thank you, Karen. Uh, any further conversation from the board? All right, we'll, we'll go through our roll call. Bruce?
I approve.
Fred?
Hi.
All right. Janet?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. All right, Chris Chamberlain and Tim, thank you very much for coming this evening. I guess we'll see at least one of you in two weeks.
Thank you. We'll see you then.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
All right. The time now is six, seven fifty, and we usually take a break around eight o'clock. This seems like a an opportune moment. So why don't we take a five minute break? Turn off your cameras, mute yourself. Come back at seven fifty-five or seven fifty-six, and we'll see you then.
Celtics are up by six.
Okay, thanks Janet.
I'm starting not to like Bam. I forget his name, his last name, but I was so bad when he intentionally put his foot under Jason Tatum. That was not okay.
On the first play of the game, I just saw a clip. He just pushed Al Horford over. Just like shoved him over. And I, you know, he seems like he's kind of a great player, but not lately.
Yeah. I liked him up until last game, and now I don't like him anymore.
All right, so time is seven fifty-six.
Wait, you gotta get rid of this cat.
Yep, let's get rid of our cats like I just did.
Okay.
See if Fred is going to come back soon. All right. Give, give Fred one more minute, and then I'll go ahead and read the intro. For this next topic. All right, so my clock has turned to seven fifty-nine, so I think I'll just go ahead with the intro for this fourth item on our agenda this evening. Planning Board Review and Recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this is regarding ZBA twenty twenty-four. My, my, my cheat sheet says dash XX, which means it doesn't have a number yet. Chris, is that correct?
It hadn't been assigned a number when we put this agenda together, and since then it has been assigned a number. But I can do a little bit of an explanation after you get through with the introduction.
All right, so the project is at ninety-eight Fearing Street. And the applicant is B and P LLC. Request special permit to construct a three unit apartment building, including ten bedrooms under section three point three two three of the zoning bylaw, and expand the parking area located behind the existing house, non-owner occupied, which is a non-owner occupied three family dwelling, to twelve parking spaces, including one handicap space for the residents of the existing, existing and proposed units. This is on map eleven C, parcel one twenty-nine in the RG zoning district. Chris, why don't you make your statement?
So this project has been filed with the town, with the town clerk, yes, and with the zoning board of appeals. And it was to go before the zoning board of appeals later in May. But it went to the local historic district commission the other night, and Nate can give you details about that, or perhaps Bruce or Karen can also do that. I think Karen's on that group. In any event, the local historic district was not favorable towards the project the way it was currently designed. And they had a lot of comments and criticisms. So the applicant has taken those to heart and is going back and is going to discuss, you know, the, the comments that they got and decide what they're going to do, if they're going to move forward or not. So the applicant preferred not to present the project in its current form to the planning board tonight. However, you are free to discuss the project as you understand it, if you choose to do that. I see people in the audience who may want to speak about the project. What is, what has happened with the local historic district commission is that that commission continued its public hearing to a date, I believe it's in early June, if Nate can confirm that. And so by that time, the applicant and, and their design team will have figured out, you know, are they going to change this into something that would be more acceptable to the local historic district commission? Or are they just going to withdraw it and figure out what they're going to do in the future? So that's the current status. So in any, any event, you're free to discuss it tonight. That's the current status. So in any, any event, you're free to discuss it tonight if you choose to do so. I wanted to point out that Jesse Major isn't a butter to the property and he has submitted comments. He's made it clear that his comments are submitted as a resident and not as a member of the planning board. And he's free to do that. He plans to recuse himself from any. Discussion that the planning board will have about this project. So you do have his comments in your packet and or. They were posted in the packet and you have many other comments from other people who have. Opinions about this project. So I don't know if you want to hear from Nate or. Bruce or Karen about the local historic district discussion, or if you just want to open it up for discussion yourselves.
Well, I guess I'd like to start by asking the board. Do you want to have a conversation about what is a project that's gonna change? We could just not, we could just not talk about it and move on. Karen?
I think there are so many people in the public audience that have been waiting. To make comments that I think it would be a good idea to listen to them. I think that. What we have to say, we've, we've read these comments, we've taken them to heart. It probably is something that we don't need to discuss a whole lot because it's possible. That the applicant will just withdraw this, but I do think we should take some time to listen to the people that have. Waited so long to chime in on this and feel so strongly about it.
Okay, thanks Karen. Bruce?
I agree with Karen. It's, and the comments that folks would likely to have are probably the same sort of comments that we've already heard on Monday. On Monday, we were. Chastening ourselves as the commission to constrain our, our discussion to the. To the constraints that are. In the bylaw that struck me that basically gives us our mandate. The issues that come before the zoning board are rather different. In fact, many of the concerns and so forth that were. People wanted to discuss and I think were restraining themselves from on Monday would be, they would be unconstrained. This evening, so that might be why many of them have decided to come back. So for that reason, I think. We should give the public comment period a fair slice. I don't know that. I need to say too much more other than that this project came first to the local historic district commission. A year and a month ago, when it had, I think. Three duplexes, in other words, it was quite large and it was quite shocking. And I remember my comments, which was kind of. I was gobsmacked that this was even possible, that, that this, and so I learned something about second principal uses at that meeting. And then again, at the one that Michael Holden presented a little while later. This that we looked at on Monday was. Was, 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 was a less, a lesser intensive. Development of a second principal use, but nonetheless was still. Of great concern to every single member of the commission. For more or less the same reasons, but not exactly the same reasons. And the, there was an overwhelming commentary from the public, which, which is what I think we should allow to happen again tonight.
Okay. Okay, so if we go ahead, then I, I, I think we should hear Bruce and Karen. Can either of you summarize the kinds of comments that the local historic commission gave to the applicants?
Yes, I.
Go, go ahead, Bruce.
I would say that. From, from Greta Wilcox to me would be the spectrum with most people down with along on Greta's side of the spectrum, which was. They could possibly imagine a, a single studio or probably nothing that this. House as a three-family was already a, a, an intensive use of the lot, given the. The, 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 the fact that it was rental, student rental. Of course, that's not really our purview, but nonetheless, we couldn't filter that. Reality out from the conversation. The, the, the bulk of the, the commission members were. Strongly to stridently opposed. I think the basis of the concern had to do with scale. I think the, everyone on the commission was respectful, somewhat. Admiring of the architectural proposal. That it felt that at least as far as the design was concerned was consistent. With the historic district commission objectives. It was the scale of the project and whether you felt the scale was in terms of the footprint or the mass of the building, or in my case, the size of the. Parking lot, which was so much bigger even than anything, but still much lesser than it was a year and a half ago. But still, it was, it was, we are mandated to make judgments and determinations of appropriateness on the basis of scale. Among a couple of other things. And I think it was the, it was the outlandish, the inconsistent. Scale of the project in from various points of view that caused the commission to be. Strongly to very strongly. Disinclined to grant a certificate of appropriateness to the project. Karen, what would you add to that?
And, and along with the fact that this property has already transitioned from owner occupied. Three-family to student occupied and has had a very disruptive effect on the neighborhood. As it is without any further. Residents being added. The neighbor next door was reporting that the parking was insufficient as it is with, with just the three. And many times guests and other people that park have been on the lawn and encroaching on his own property. I think that people in this neighborhood are really panicked that if we allow something like this to go, and I think. That, you know, the, the investors were unfairly in a way enticed to buy this property. By a realtor who, who pretty much said, you know, you have the possibility of building two further houses, so. It, it's not surprising that an investor who knows the need of students and how much they pay would jump at the chance to. Make a really wonderful investment here, but they should have somehow been warned that this is in a district, a historic district. Which is trying to preserve the residential na- nature and it's a very fragile district. And if something as already is happening comes where, where there's so much increased noise and parking. Disrupting this, there's going to be a domino effect and that's not to anybody's advantage. We're struggling to keep our schools supplied with children. There's, we're trying to get. Families and children to remain in the town. When there's an exodus, it's not to anybody's advantage, not the universities. Not the residents. And this is a really important cornerstone in the way that we're going to go. So that's why I think so many people are here willing to talk and why our decision on what happens here. Is crucial. And I would sort of remind the investors that preserving this as a beautiful house as it is. On a, on a nice green piece of lawn is also a very valuable thing for the future, so. You may be much better off financially even if you help preserve this in the way that it is now.
All right, thanks Karen. So unless board members have any other comments right now, I will turn it to public comment. So we still have fourteen members of the public present. Members of the public, this is the time, if you want to make a comment on this project as it's current constituted. For you to do that this evening. I will remind you that the planning board is not the approving body for this project. The local historic district commission has pretty much veto power over it and the ZBA. Has the authority over it. Planning board will, can make a recommendation to ZBA. It doesn't even have to do that. So we may or may not be a useful group to hear your comments. All right, so I see one hand. Pam, if we could bring Ken Rosenthal over. And if you're able to set up the three-minute clock, that would be great. Welcome, Ken, and please give us, repeat your name and give us your street address in Amherst and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall, and thank you, planning board. Ken Rosenthal, fifty-three Sunset Avenue. I have written to you and asked you to please recommend, to give a no recommendation, a recommendation of no on this project. I want to first mention a design flaw. I, I think, by the way, they've chosen very good architects, but. This is, if, if completed as proposed, and I know it may be changed, there would be six units. And according to town law, that would mean possibility of four unrelated individuals. This location is certain to draw only students and that means that there are likely, very likely to be twenty-four unrelated. Individuals living on this site. No matter how they have designed the parking area, it's inadequate. And it will not be able to accommodate the cars that would come with the twenty-four people, even if not everyone owns a car. And their occasional visitors. So that's a basic flaw that they are going to find impossible, almost impossible to beat. But more significantly than that, this is a neighborhood that many of us who live here. Want to see to support the university, but not to support it with students, to support it as a place where employees, staff and faculty. And live with their families year-round and walk to work. It's an ideal place for that and it has been for that, that way for so many years. Some of you, of course, know Rolf Carlstrom, who's the former chair of the biology department, who, who has. Lived there and has touted it as a great place for faculty to live and I submit other than faculty also, also staff. But more than that, it's also a neighborhood that attracts people like me. I, I came to retire to Amherst. And I wanted to be close to the center of town. I wanted to be close to the university. And I, I live on Sunset Avenue, not very far from this location. So. I'm hopeful that the planning board and the planning department will see that we should find ways to encourage. That residents in this area through their housing be year-round residents, people whose cars are registered in town. And who will want to live here and shop here year-round. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
All right, Ken. Thank you. I see a second hand from Melissa Ferris. Pam, if you could bring over Melissa. Welcome, Melissa. You can unmute yourself and give us your name and your street address.
Hi, I'm Melissa Ferris. I'm here with my husband Graham Caldwell.
Hi.
We, we are at two eighty-five Lincoln and we are one of the abutters to this property. I, I do also want to identify myself. I am a currently enrolled UMass student as well. And so this, this isn't just about, you know, students versus year-round residents. For me. It's about the crowding of this lot and the enormous size of this building that these developers want to put up. It's got a. Two thousand square foot footprint, as opposed to the current house, which is already quite large. Has about, I think it was twelve hundred square foot footprint. So this is going to take up an enormous amount of the lot. As is the paving. And this is right on the tan brook. So there have been drainage issues. For a lot of the properties right around here, there's been flooding at the, the house on the opposite side of this on Fearing Street. Basement flooding and stuff. So we're, we're, I think understandably concerned. About what the paving of like a third of this lot can do to all of the surrounding areas. But this house is gonna loom over the backyards of several properties. They're gonna be able to look directly into, you know, our home. It's, we, similar to what Ken was saying, we just recently moved here. We've only been here, we haven't even been here for two years. We selected a house in this neighborhood because we wanted to be in a place that was close to town, but that, where the houses had breathing room. As opposed to moving to say North Hampton where the houses are significantly closer together in the downtown area. We selected this place very specifically for the breathing space and the buffer zones between the homes. And this would take that away. This would probably result in people like us selling our house and leaving. And if we do that, the only people who are gonna buy a house right next to a development are gonna be other developers. So I, I think this really will create a domino effect in the historic district if this. Development is permitted, that will result in a very different tenor than the one that made us want to come here.
Also, the, all of these, the houses around us, like these blocks between Lincoln and Fearing and, and Page. Have, all have the, the, the houses are all on the street-facing side, so there's like a, a sort of communal shared green space behind them, which is really lovely. And there's, you know, thing, you get to see like wildlife and stuff. And this project is like dead in the center of that. So it kind of affects everyone. And like frankly, we are in terror of this, of this project going forward. In any capacity, really. I mean, it's right next to our house.
Okay, we're, we're running out of time. Sorry, shut up, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Melissa and I think it was Caldwell. All right, thank you both. The next person is Jennifer Taub. Pam, if you can bring her over. Hello, Jennifer.
Hello. Thank, thank you. So I'm Jennifer Taub at two fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue and I'm speaking as a resident. And I would, you know, concur with everything that Graham and Melissa and Ken Rosenthal have said, so I don't want to repeat that, but. Would just like to also emphasize that although this may, you know, appear the lot. At ninety-eight Fearing has some depth, but actually the lots are very narrow. So there's already, as everyone said, a triplex that's currently standing on the lot and they're proposing to add. Basically an apartment building behind it. These lots are very narrow, so to have twenty to twenty-four students and the LLC that owns it. Has been clear that they're intending to rent it to students, so it will be. And in our neighborhood, although we're close to the campus, for every student resident in, in a house or. Duplex in our neighborhood, there's a car for every student. So they. They have their cars because that's how they get back and forth to Amherst from their hometowns. So even though they can walk to class, they still have cars. And the, again, the, the owner of the property has. Been very upfront about the fact that this is who they intend their tenants to be. It's not to provide. Housing for families or other year-round non-student households. And while we certainly welcome accessory dwelling units, and there are a number of them in our RG neighborhood. This is not that because the second unit that's being proposed to be built, the apartment building is actually larger than the. Current triplex already on the lot. You know, with an ADU which can exceed a thousand square feet and the owner has to. Reside in either the accessory or primary unit. That's something we, you know, wholeheartedly support and welcome. In the neighborhood, but, but this is not that. The other concern. You know, for those who may not be familiar with the actual lot, Fearing Street, the backyards back up onto Cosby Street. Lincoln and Page. So this development will impact residents on four streets. So in terms of a domino effect and pushing people out of the neighborhood, you're talking about Fearing Street, Lincoln Avenue, Page and Cosby. Will all be directly impacted and it will be a much less appealing place for all of the families with children that live. And send children to our public schools that live in, in this neighborhood. And the other thing I want to add. Is that the parking, I mean, part of what's so frankly objectional about this is they're literally proposing to put in. A parking lot on the middle of a residential street. There is, because the lots are narrow. All the driveways on the street, they're just the width of a single car.
Jennifer, you're, you're up to three minutes, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, that's a lot of cars to get in and out of the single driveway. And there's no on-street parking on Fearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Roger at twenty-six Cosby Ave. Roger, if you could give us your full name and repeat your address.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Roger Matledge at twenty-six.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Roger Matledge at twenty-six Cosby Ave with my wife Patricia Brinkman, who's also on on another machine. In neighboring room. I just wanted, this is my first time doing this, so I'm not sure. You are, I thought you're here tonight to see about issuing a variance. Is that true?
No, in fact, we are an ancillary or a related body to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So when we are allowed to make recommendations to the zoning board, but they are the deciding body. So although we're interested in your comments, we will not be the ones who actually decide what is allowed to be built on this lot.
Okay, okay. So I don't.
You could, you could consider that we're we're the warm-up act. And so you can try out your comments on us and refine them for the zoning board.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for your patience for doing this. The, I don't know if you've seen my comments. It's M A T T L A D G E, misspelled, but that's okay. But I I carefully mapped out the area that we're talking about, and it's it's actually Fearing, Lincoln, Cosby, Page and Bestin all have this green space behind them that is affected. And and so as every, I won't repeat what everybody else has said, but we're all in terror of this. I'd also mention that it's really interesting how the presentation has of the developers and the architects make it look like this building is out in the in the plains of of Oklahoma. It does not, the renderings do not show at all, and they very carefully not shown some things. Also, there, it says it's a twelve space parking lot. It's actually a thirteen space parking lot, which includes a handicap, but there's also a space next to the garage that's not marked as one, which is another one. So there's actually fourteen parking spaces there. So and I don't think I need to say anything else that other people have said that would would be useful and take up your time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any any other members of the public who want to comment? All right, we have Priscilla White. Pam, if we can bring over Priscilla. Priscilla, welcome. You have three minutes. If you could give us your street address and confirm your name.
Hi, Priscilla White, three eighteen Lincoln Ave. And I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the people who are living surrounding ninety-eight Fearing Street. Because I've been in a similar situation around the corner from them. I live in the three hundred block of Lincoln. And over the last twenty something years, one by one, the houses have gone from being family owned. When I moved here, there were ten children to two, three generation families. And a mix of families and and students, which felt like a a good balance. And one by one, the houses were people moved, they went on the market and they were bought very quickly by developers. And to the point where we're the only family left, and I had to make a very painful decision to move. We had hoped to age in place here, but but it's been impossible to do that because of the change over the years. And I'm just bringing this up because I think it's important that the scale of this is the scale of a commercial endeavor. And and these, from the historic point of view, these houses were built as single-family homes or sometimes owner occupied two-family homes. And and to preserve some of that character in the neighborhood is really important. You know, I I don't stand to gain or lose, but I just felt I'd like to speak up on behalf of the people on those five streets surrounding this property who do stand to lose, as I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anyone else? All right. Chris, do you need to interject? I see another hand.
Go ahead with the other hand.
Okay, let's bring over Pat Brinkman. Welcome, Pat.
Hi. I think I've unmuted.
Yes, you are. You have three minutes.
Thanks. And I live with Roger Malidge, who is in the other room facing ninety-eight Fearing. And we're one of the four small lots directly behind a budding. And I guess I can't add anything more to people who already said stuff. Yes, I am panicked. I've already started making plans to sell the house. I love my neighbors. I love living here. We also retired and came here at the beginning of the pandemic. It was very quiet here. The reason we came here, we sold our house on over an acre in the town with two acres zoning to move to Connecticut, and that didn't pan out. But so we came here not owning a house, having a lot of money in the bank, but not a lot. And we were lucky because we were shown four houses, two that were rentals that were available and two that were for sale, which we didn't know we would buy. But the rental, the real estate agent said, you know what? Based on what you said, I think that even though this house is way over your price line, you may kind of want to look at it anyway. So we did. We came here to twenty-six Cosby back in March, as you know, at the beginning of the pandemic. It's very quiet. It was very weird, and we we fell in love and we decided to move here. We get let the student who was living here. We gave him like two months to find another place to live, and then we moved in. Have done a lot of work since then, and we really want to stay. And and other people have said things about, you know, the wildlife in the area, you know, besides the owls and stuff. We also see bear. We saw a bobcat the other day. We have skunks living under our deck. We have a wonderful green space here area that's shared and a wonderful community. And we've had a potluck, apparently. Sunday brunch has been going on for thirty years that we go to every month. So we love this neighborhood. We want to stay. But if this happens, I don't think we can. I mean, it's still how, because I I love what Priscilla said. I've heard that from so many people. I met the woman who lived on Sunset and the Bunson Library, and I was like, I love living here. And she goes, yeah, but you don't know Amherst like I do. The hockey house is across in my neighborhood. And before I knew it, all of a sudden she was gone. And now we do have a new development there right across in the southwest. So we have a lot of nice houses over there. Anyway, I think my time is up, but I just urge you to really just hear, hear the the sadness and those of us who live now who can't stay here, because we now, we love the students, but we have really seen the worst of the worst. It was a couple of very few. Bye. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. Chris, did you want to say something?
I just wondered what you were thinking of doing with the comments that you've heard in the discussion that you've had and right now, it's unclear whether these applicants are going to move ahead with their zoning board of appeals application. They may, but they may not. So do you want to put anything together for them in terms of a recommendation for the zoning board of appeals in case they do review this project, or do you want to wait and see what happens and you know, there may be, the the project may evolve into something else, and then you can comment. I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Personally, I feel like we should wait. You know, I mean, it may never come to the ZBA, in which case, you know, asking you to put together some minutes of this conversation, you know, I'm sure you'll include some of this in the regular minutes of this meeting. But but going beyond that at this point feels kind of unnecessary, you know, and not you know, why put it together if we're never going to be able to give it to anyone? You know, and most of the comments we heard this evening were not about the project per se. The details of the project. It was really about the fundamental idea of putting a building of that size on that lot. Okay, so I see three hands from board members. Janet?
Doug, I agree with you that we don't, we shouldn't do a recommendation to the ZBA on a project that may not take place. But I I'm actually glad that this is on the agenda. I'm really always want to hear from the public, particularly people who are sort of in the front lines of, you know, one of the fundamental issues of Amherst, which is student housing, where it should go and the impacts on non-students. And so, you know, when I looked at this project, I have questions about, you know, can you have two principal uses on the same lot? I've been hearing that you can't do that, except for in some very specific situations. This looks like that would violate that. And so I'd like to know more about the law on that. But we're not discussing that. But it's like, you know, I I know the ZBA has pushed back on some projects like that. You know, I went to ninety-eight Fearing Street, and I also drove down Allen Street and Philip Street and all the parts of, you know, Sunset Street that was close to to UMass. And, you know, those streets are mostly not not fearing, but parts of fearing, I would say, are sort of gone to just student housing. The condition of the houses, many of the houses is very kind of worn down and beat up. There were beer pong tables. There's there's chairs and garbage. And you know, this has been happening closer to me on Shumway Street, South Whitney Street on Route nine from like Amherst College down to Southeast Street. Main Street used to be all families. Someone in town meeting got up and said, when I grew up here, Main Street was filled with families, and now it's mostly student housing, a lot of it pretty rundown. You know, we can address the rundown issue, you know, by, you know, enforcing the code or another bylaw. But it's the quality of life and, you know, you know, it's, we have to figure out as a planning board and as a town, as a town council, how we coexist in a way that it's not detrimental. And so, you know, this is why we need to have the housing discussion, but not just a discussion, but actual solutions to how to figure out that everybody should be able to live in a neighborhood, but it has to be a mix, and it can't be predominantly students. It can't be investor owned. And, you know, I I just, you know, I've heard people talk, like I was just at brunch with my old neighbors. One of our mutual friends who was living on Shumway Street, his whole street, he owned his house, whole street turned to student housing, constant partying, and he left. And I, do we, is that the kind of town that we want, where you can stay if you're insulated? You know, I I live next to, you know, hundreds of acres of land. I do live in a neighborhood with rental housing, but it's, you know, the minority. And I live in a neighborhood that has small houses that are very attractive to investors for rental houses. And so let's figure it out with very concrete proposals. And let's, you know, take a step forward as a board, as a town, to adopt changes to our code that will lead to like some harmony and we can all live together.
All right. Thank you, Janet. Karen?
I think that we should have some minutes about the comments that we've been hearing. I think these heartfelt urgent panic comments are something that we should take note of. And we can, you know, we can't make a recommendation what hasn't been submitted, but we can certainly echo the local historic commission to say that this is really inappropriate, that this is a neighborhood that is trying to preserve itself. And if you're not going to have family owned ownership on a property, you have to severely limit the amount of dwellings that that are going to be. Because as we can see that what's already happened with this particular house is already causing a disturbance. So I I think we should weigh in a little bit on that we concur with the local historic commission in saying that this is inappropriate as it is planned, and it has to be severely curtailed before it would ever be anything that we could recommend.
Thank you, Karen. Fred, you're next, but Chris, you've put up your hand. Did you want to interject something?
Yeah, I wanted to say that the local historic commission has not made a determination about this yet. And it may be that the project is withdrawn, so I guess my recommendation would be to hold off on the planning board making a recommendation until there was something to make the recommendation about, you know, the project, if it goes forward, is going to be different. Maybe you will still be opposed to it. Maybe the local historic district will still be opposed to it, but to make recommendation right now on something that is not not solid, not formed, is potentially not not useful. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Fred, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, this is deja vu all over again. Back in the early nineties, I recall being part of this kind of a of a problem and I was instrumental, in fact, I invented footnote M. And I brought it in by petition. This is back when we had a town meeting. I brought it in by petition. The planning staff didn't particularly like it. But it it addressed the problem. It was, it used, however, a metric of six thousand square feet. Somehow that has been emasculated and now reads four thousand. It should go back to six thousand. This is an absolutely classic example. When it came to a vote in a representative town meeting, which was famous for never passing, achieving a two-thirds vote on zoning bylaw amendments. That zoning amendment passed unanimously. The town wanted it, and I submit the town wants to address this. And we need to do it. I did some research. I looked at the the parcels all around this on Fearing Street and it was very interesting. I looked at the areas of each and how that they would, what they were threatened with. Right now, if you look at the the street, Fearing Street between Lincoln Avenue and the, I just blanked on it, the the oh, the east, the the north-south street, the next one off of Fearing Street.
I'm sad.
No, no, the other way, going going east.
Allen Street?
Triangle?
No.
Pleasant, North Pleasant?
No, no, that's too far.
Well, Allen, Phillips.
Cosby.
What is it?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah, it's not Allen. It's the next one down from Allen.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I think. Something.
When I was there, there was no sign on that street.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, I I went there and there are in that section, there there's one building that's owned by UMass. It doesn't count. There's nine single families. There's one three family and there's two two families. This is completely out of character, and I think it can be attacked at the ZBA under the consistent character requirements that are in the bylaw. But it really should be, if if we still have footnote N, the way I put it into the bylaw, this would not have happened. At most, there could be one additional unit. But because footnote M has been emasculated, this becomes possible. And this is how, and this presents a policy issue that the planning board needs to think about. presents a policy issue that the planning board needs to think about. Uh, as we go forward on, uh, looking at, uh, at housing issues.
All right. Thank you, Fred. Uh, Bruce, you are next.
Um, so far as minoting this, uh, I, I could simply suggest that, um, almost everybody who spoke tonight, we have a letter from and, and they're, they're fairly lengthy and well-articulated letters. Uh, there are eight of them that I have in my file that Chris has forwarded. And I think, uh, referencing those letters would be quite sufficient.
Thanks, Bruce. Janet?
So I, I think what Fred is talking about is something we need to talk about is even with footnote N, M, emasculated, we're looking at seven units per acre in the RG. Um, in the RN, it's four units an acre. And, you know, we're increasing density through, you know, a mixed-use buildings in the village centers in downtown. That was the plan, but is the plan really to fill every acre lot in the RG with seven units? And I think, you know, I, I've always admired the pluck of that in some ways, like, yeah, we accept the density. But when we see what it looks like on the ground, is that what we want for that neighborhood? And I think the answer is no, we're going to lose those neighborhoods. We're going to lose the communities that are there. Um, you know, I, you know, people who are students live in those neighborhoods and like them because they're green. They're not super dense. And so I actually think we need to reduce the density in our neighborhoods, in our, you know, RNs and RGs. And the trade-off is increased density in the village centers. And I think that's just something we have to look at. I just don't think, and I also don't think like people, you know, in RN or RG say, oh, I'll buy a house and I'll build, build six units and I'll owner occupy and run my, you know, apartment building. It's not something that people normally do when they buy a residence. They might buy a triplex. They might convert to a triplex. They might buy a duplex. And they're not going to buy a, you know, I don't know what a six, you know, sixplex is and, and run that. That's just not, that's not really realistic in terms of what's going to happen is, is that those neighborhoods will become converted to basically commercial properties and we're going to lose something in the town, which is the residents who contribute to us. And, you know, I'm not anti-student in any way, but nothing in our master plan or in logic says, let's, let's lose street after street to investor housing and students and, you know, behavior.
Okay, Karen. Chris?
So I wanted to suggest that, um, you know, Pam and I take pretty good notes, especially Pam. And, um, we create minutes and so we're going to have a pretty detailed rendition of this meeting, including the comments that were made by members of the, um, attendees who wanted to speak. And we also have those letters. And so when the time comes that this does actually go before the zoning board of appeals, you know, we could put together a little package of letters and comments and things that we heard from the public and send it to the ZBA.
Well, I assume if it, if it comes to the ZBA again, we'll have a chance to see it again.
You will, yes.
So, you know, we may have a whole different set of comments and public members who commented, so, you know.
So I guess that what I'm trying to say is we, we have a pretty good record of what was said tonight. And then eventually you'll have to figure out what to do with it. Um, and what you might do with it is just if the project goes ahead, have them come back, have them actually make a presentation to you in whatever form it is, and then make your recommendation. I don't think we should put together a package now because there's no, no end goal. There's no one to send it to. The ZBA isn't going to be looking at this, at least for a while.
Right. Okay. Uh, I mean, that makes sense to me. Okay. Um, I see no hands from the board or the public. Time is eight forty-seven. And so I think we can move on to the next item on our agenda. Old business, first item. Uh, we wanted to have a brief discussion about the letter that Pam or that, uh, Chris sent to the, to the ZBA regarding the Schutzburg Road Solar Project. Uh, Chris, I'll let you start.
Yeah. So I wanted to apologize to the board for my mishandling of this, um, letter. Um, I, I sent, I, I created a draft based on the October 4th, uh, meeting minutes. And I sent it to Doug for his review, thinking I may just send it to Doug. And then two hours later, I said to myself, oh, I should probably send it to the whole board. And so that's what I did. And Doug sent me back some comments, um, suggesting that I condense part of the letter, which I did. And then, um, I sent the revised letter out to all the planning board members. Um, and then, so that was, uh, Thursday, Thursday morning, I sent the revised letter out to the planning board members. What I didn't do, so first of all, I shouldn't have sent it to Doug and then sent it to the planning board. I should have made a choice and I probably should have just sent it right to the all of planning board members. Second thing is I should have said in my email to you, please give me your comments by X time on X date. And I didn't do that. So, um, Janet sent edits to me on Friday morning. And when I got those edits, I sent them to Doug to see what he thought. And he didn't have time to deal with this because he works. So he said, well, either send my revisions as I had outlined them a day or two ago, or wait until Monday. But we here in the planning department were struggling to put together a package for the, um, zoning board of appeals, which was going to be hearing about the Schutzbury Road project. And so we felt, um, pressure to get the letter out in the ZBA packet on Friday. So then Janet sent an email back, you know, expressing disappointment that her uh, comments, which I had received on Friday morning, didn't get put into the letter. So it was a comedy of errors or a comedy of horrors, or however you want to characterize it. Anyway, I take responsibility for the lack of coordination and for the poor, um, handling of the, um, of the letter and the edits. And I apologize to you.
All right. And, and I, for my part in the, uh, in the, in the process, um, it turns out that between, between the Wednesday uh, draft and the Thursday draft, the comments that I had made were on the last paragraph of her first draft. So we had actually already condensed, uh, the first draft to get to the second draft. And then Janet, your comments were in fact on that same paragraph, uh, expanding it again. So I felt like Chris and I had already agreed that it could be condensed. So within the time that I had to think about it, it was like, we've already, we've already dealt with that. And, um, I thought the two of us had agreed on that that was, uh, an improvement over the first draft. So that was the reason for my recommendation that we just issue where, where we were Friday morning. Um, I will say, you know, I, I view that as, you know, all of these letters that are signed by Chris, they are ultimately Chris's letters. And she can ask for advice from me, from all of us. And she can disregard all of it. So, um, you know, unless it's a letter that you are signing or I am signing, you know, it's really up to Chris. And, um, she has a timeline to meet and, um, so, you know, that's the way it panned out. But, um, you know, I think it was unfortunate, you know, on a number of, of levels. And I hope we don't have the problem again. But that, that's the way, that's the way it went. Uh, Janet, do you want to comment?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I, I appreciate the explanation and the confusion and the timing issue. Um, you know, I just think we need sort of clear, like, a clear process for, you know, planning board reports to town council on zoning amendments. And then if we're sending comments to the ZBA, what's the process? Who signs off on what? And I, I think Bruce is the one who said, you know, he wanted to see the comments that we want, we should, that all these comments should be sent to the planning board. And then I saw that Chris asked for comments. And so I just think we need like clear processes. We know who's the finals, you know, who's the decider. Um, and, you know, and then it, it happens and I, you know, I, you know, there's been situations where planning board reports to town council on zoning amendments went to town council without the zoning, the planning board reading it or having time to comment on it. And so I just, I just think we need to get consistency and clarity about what is the process, who's deciding what and the timing of it. Um, so, but I do appreciate the comedy of errors because, you know, we live in that world. You know, personally, I spent a year and a half on the solar bylaw working group. I did tons of research. I, um, you know, talked to tons of people, planning directors. Um, I read tons of documents, brought in experts. And so I really felt like, you know, I, I really felt like I have some expertise and I really think these are important issues for the, um, the ZBA to look at, particularly since it's forest land. And that was really a key, um, issue for us. I really want the ZBA to read Eric Jake's comments on the draft water supply protection report, which, you know, no one would see if you read the final report, but she wrote like four or five pages of comments about the impacts of, you know, removing, you know, taking trees off of land, the impacts on water on the soils, you know, the solar arrays, heating. So I mean, she, she really put a huge amount of time in it. And that, that comment seems to disappear. And I just really wanted, you know, these very specific things that I had learned about that would relate to solar arrays and forest land to go in. And so I actually appreciate that you're working and you're just like, oh, we just did this. But, you know, and maybe didn't take the time to think like, oh, why is she saying these weirdly specific things? But these are issues that we had talked over and foresters from the Harvard Forest that were important. And so, you know, I, so I appreciate the explanation because I just kind of thought, why did I spend a half hour doing this? And not, you know, no one even knew, but I realized now it's just sort of passed in, in, in the email chain and stuff like that. So I appreciate that.
All right. Well, we'll try to do better next time. All right. Um, unless anybody else wants to comment on that topic, we can move on. All right. Uh, old business. Um, any topics not reasonably anticipated?
No.
All right. Um, new business, likewise, new, new unexpected topics?
No.
All right. Form A and R subdivision? Projects, applications? Nope, nothing?
No. Maybe I, did I, I might want to report to you about something, that there was an A and R that was connected with, um, the Ball Lane, um, multifamily or what, whatever it was duplex project that went through conservation, um, went through the zoning board of appeals. Did I talk to you about that at all? Because there was a little, uh, lot that was created out of that parcel that the zoning board of appeals, um, agreed could be covered by the comprehensive permit. And so it was actually, uh, endorsed by the chair of the zoning board of appeals. And I wanted to tell you about that because it is different from the way we normally do A and R. So you might find that A and R at the registry and you might wonder, well, why was that signed by the chair of the zoning board of appeals instead of the planning board chair? And the reason is because it was, um, they authorized the creation of that lot and we checked it with KP Law to make sure that that was the right way to do it. And they said, yes, it can be done that way because it's part of a comprehensive permit. So I just wanted to let you know that that's a little different from what we normally do.
Well, thanks. Next time I'm looking through A and Rs at the registry, I'll keep that in mind. Okay. Uh, how about upcoming ZBA applications? Any, any others than, than we've already talked about tonight?
Hey, Chris, Nate?
Uh, Ron Levertier is proposing a mixed-use building. Uh, you know, next to his 417 West Street property down near Amherst, uh, Office Park. It's, it's to the north. It's actually where others, there had been a ranch house. It's behind that. Um, you know, it requires a special permit from the zoning board because of the districts it's in. I don't know if that's anything that's, you know, the planning board would want to see. It's a nine-unit building with, um, non-residential space on the first floor or, you know, um, first or, you know, yeah, I guess we consider the first floor.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So you might want to look at that.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's going to be building up that village center. Okay. All right. Um, how about upcoming SPP, SPR and SUB applications?
I can't think of any right now, but that's not because there aren't any. If I think of them tomorrow, I'll tell you about that.
Okay. All right. Moving on to committee and liaison reports. Chad, uh, Bruce, anything on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right. Uh, I don't, I think, I, I think I saw maybe today in my inbox, uh, something, an update from the chair of the CPAC committee, but I haven't read it yet. So, uh, I can report on that next time if, if it seems significant. Karen, anything on DRB?
Uh, yep, we met, um, this week and some of the things were easy to, to, um, address quickly. There's going to be, uh, at the Paradise of India, a new awning that we approved. And then, interestingly, it kept at the park, at the playground, uh, there, we reviewed um, something called the Portland Lou, which is going to be a, um, restroom that they're proposing to put in. And, um, it's a very interesting structure. It just kind of gets plopped in. Um, it's not totally unat- unattractive, but it is very utilitarian. And so the design review committee asked them to come back with maybe some alternatives of location where it might fit in a little bit better. And for those of you that are interested, I mean, this is kind of an important thing that the park is going to be adorned with, um, a Portland Lou. You might walk there and sort of look at it and see what, what you think or, at any rate, it seems like a good solution from many aspects, but we just want to see where is it going to look the best? That's, that was the most interesting part of our meeting. And then the, uh, common where we also wanted to be a little bit more, um, specific that we would prefer the paths on the common to be, uh, oil and stone rather than asphalt, which is proposed. But we're not sure that's possible because it's a matter of cost and maintenance. But the design review board, uh, did all sort of concur that we would prefer that look.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Uh, I saw two hands come up during Karen's comments. Janet?
So I'm glad to hear there's going to be toilet facilities near the Kendrick Park. Remember we talked about that? I thought that was really important. It is not the most attractive thing. Is there a way to like paint it like those transformers downtown? To make it just an art object? Um, and I, I also would prefer the crushed stone. I think asphalt would be kind of tacky, you know, in what could be a really attractive, you know, add to our town. So.
So quickly, I'll just say that the, the, um, that restroom facility on Kendrick Park will probably have to come before the planning board for a site plan review.
Ah.
You know, so I think that's something that, uh, Bob Parent, the capital products manager for the town is preparing. So that would be an upcoming one. Uh, you know, it, the, if you want to, you can go to the, you can go to the designer review packet, um, for this week, for the 29th of April, and the documents are there. It's visible. I mean, I have, uh, so they're online for anyone to look at, but it, it would be coming to the planning board for review.
Okay. Uh, Fred, you had your hand up. Are you no longer interested?
Well, I, I was, I, I didn't catch the first time around that it was Kendrick Park. I wanted to clarify that it was. And thank you. Uh, and, uh, as someone who does grandfather duty, uh, at the town parks, uh, 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 that is definitely needed. And so I was glad to hear that.
Okay. All right. All right. And then, um, Chris? All right. And then Chris, anything from CRC we should know about?
Yes, the CRC has been looking at the solar bylaw. And I think that they've looked at it three times. We had a meeting this past Tuesday. We had one on April 9th and one on March 26th. Anyway, the idea currently is that the solar bylaw may have things in it as drafted that really should be in either planning board or zoning board of appeals rules and regulations such as submittal requirements. And it may have some things in it that should be more boilerplate conditions than things that are contained in the zoning bylaw. And it may also have material in it that is very supportive of what the solar bylaw is requiring, but may not be appropriate to put in the bylaw and might be more appropriate to put in a memo to town council. So the community resources committee is working through all of these things now. And then they're going to start to really look at the language of, of the bylaw. Right now they haven't changed the language at all, but if you want to get a sense of what they're proposing to do, you can look at the CRC packet for Tuesday, April 30th. And that would give you a sense of what, of what's going on there. Yeah. So we'll, we'll be continuing that discussion moving forward.
Okay. Great. Time is nine oh four. We're up to the report of chair. I don't have anything to report. How about you, Chris? Anything? A report of staff?
Report of staff, yes. I had a very joyful report to you when I reported that we were going to be hiring a planner. And she's going to be starting on May 6th, but now I have some unjoyful reporting to do. Our staff person for the zoning board of appeals and the DRB, who is Rob Wachilla, has announced that he's going to be working for the town or city of East Long Meadow. He's going to become their planning director. So once again, we're going to have a vacancy in our staff and Nate and I and Pam will carry on. But it's, it's a very sad thing that I'm telling you because I really liked the guy and I liked his work and I think he's energetic and smart and I'm going to be missing him, but that's why East Long Meadow wanted him. So anyway, we will carry on.
Okay. You win some, you lose some. All right. Anything else from anyone? Time is nine oh five. If not, we can adjourn. I guess our next meeting, Chris, is the 15th?
Next meeting is the 15th.
Yes. Fred, I see your hand.
Just to, the, the street I was reaching for is Nutting Avenue. Sorry.
Okay.
My mind.
Very good. All right. On that note, thank you for joining and we'll see you in two weeks.
Bye. Bye bye.
All right. Good night.